...eight-four. Safety message, just a real quick one. We got a bunch of snow yesterday. For those of us, including me, who did not plow, or snowblow, or shovel, be careful. My philosophy is this late in the year, God put it there, he'll take it away shortly.
[laughter]
But be careful. All right. Number three, people, finance. "Presentation of Delta Dental Plan and Potential Savings from the Plan Changes and Consider Approval and Move Recommendation to the Full Board." I will turn this over to our benefits consultant, David Krop.
Is being recorded, yes.
So there's numerous documents that you should have. The first one I'm going to go through is the funding analysis report. It looks like this. Funding analysis report, to refresh people's memories, is basically a measurement of the funding levels relative to the plan performance. So at the green, we have revenue. An example is eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. That's the funding levels times the individuals enrolled. That's in the month of September. We have expenses, fixed expenses, which is what you pay Delta to administer the claims of sixty-three, sixty-nine. Dental claims of fifty-four thousand dollars. So the blue line gives us a positive performance in that month of twenty-six thousand dollars. Year-to-date through February, it's a ninety-two thousand dollar positive balance. Next, I'll go to this document. This is benchmarking details of your plan compared to Delta's block of business. So there's numerous categories that are focused on in the industry. And they are preventive diagnostic, basic restorative, and major restorative. Deductible is an annual maximum. So the first benchmark is the annual maximum. Your annual maximum is a thousand dollars for the dental plan. Fifty-nine percent of their block of business, Delta's block of business, fits into that thousand-dollar max. You can see the different categories of different amounts and different, and the pie chart is, I guess it's in the pie chart. Orthodontic max is fifteen hundred. Twenty-three percent of employers in Delta's block have a fifteen-hundred-dollar max. More prevalent is a forty-five-hundred-dollar, or excuse me, forty-five percent at a ortho-at-all. Individual dental deductible, which generally applies to restorative services only. The benchmark is sixty-five percent at a fifty-dollar deductible. Going on to preventive services. Preventive services and diagnostic on the second page, ninety-six percent of plans with Delta, incidentally, Delta, I don't know what their market share is in Wisconsin, it's huge. They have a majority of the business in the state. Ninety-six percent of their block of business has a hundred percent coverage without deductible for preventive and diagnostic. For basic restorative, eighty-six percent of their block of business is an eighty percent coverage. Your coverage is at a hundred percent. Major restorative, eighty-four percent of their block of business is fifty percent. Your coverage is a hundred percent. Orthodontic coverage, majority of their block is fifty percent coverage. You can, the theme there, or the takeaway, is that the dental plan at the school district of Janesville is very rich. It's beyond rich. I'm going to say that there aren't too many employers in the area, if not the state or the nation, that have as rich a dental plan. So an option to consider is a plan, your current plan, this document. Kevin, you missed all the good stuff.
Where'd you pass everything, sorry?
Summary is, you have a very rich plan.
Dental.
Dental, relative to the market. If you look on your left-hand side of this document, it's the current plan design. Delta has three level, three levels of providers. They have a PPO level of providers. What that simply means is the dentist agreed to a low fee, or a lower fee. They have a network premier level, or premier providers. That's minimal discount, but the dentist can't balance bill patients for services that are covered. An example of that is, and then the other level of provider is a non-contracted provider. If you see a non-contracted provider, the dentist can balance bill for services. An example of that is, the dentist bills a hundred-and-fifty dollars for cleaning your teeth. Delta says it's worth a hundred dollars. The dentist can balance bill you for that amount. In the case of a PPO dentist, or premier dentist, they can't balance bill you.
And the overwhelming majority of dentists in southern Wisconsin are either PPO or premier.
Correct. Let me give you the metrics of the participation in each category. The spend for this study period was eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. Four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand went to premier dentists. Two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand went to PPO dentists. And non-network providers was a hundred-and-forty-four thousand. So you have about thirty percent of the claims going to PPO dentists. Our recommendation is to go to a PPO benefit design. Maintain your rich level of benefits with the PPO providers. And have a reduced benefit for a non-PPO provider, which is a more standard, the benefit design is more standard with the marketplace for a non-PPO dentist. The projected cost savings that Delta's put together is about a fifteen percent savings, or a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. With your cost share, the district doesn't save the full hundred-and-fifty because there's cost share with the employees. And depending on what you do with cost share, will dictate how much of that is employee savings compared to employer savings. At the current ninety-ninety split, the savings, well, it's a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollar savings to the district, if you want to the option one, or the PPO benefit design.
So, if, go ahead, Commissioner Solomon.
So currently, we do have a premium share with our staff.
Correct.
And ninety percent for the total coverage, whether it's single or family.
Correct.
And these savings aren't based on changing that, it's based upon changing plan design.
Correct.
And the downside would be, there'd be some dentist who wouldn't participate, or where's the, where's the trade-off?
You will hear noise from employees.
About?
About an additional cost share. So let me give, give an example. You currently see a premier dentist, and you have a crown done. Your cost, or your share of the cost, is going to be currently zero. It's a hundred percent covered, up to a thousand dollars per year. If you go to this plan design and the employee doesn't change to a PPO dentist, then they're going to be responsible for a fifty-dollar deductible and fifty percent of charges thereafter.
Fifty percent?
Correct. So that crown is going to cost them five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The plan will pay four-hundred-and-fifty of that. A crown is more than a thousand dollars, as an example.
I just had one.
Yeah. It's probably twelve-hundred bucks.
Paid a hundred percent of it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm curious, how much was it?
Less than a thousand, though.
Okay.
Cash discount. One positive, similar to the medical, okay? How I look at this is, it also will put pressure, based on our size, with the area dentists, and make them compete for our business. And they will have a business decision to make if they want to join the PPO, or if they want to not join and risk losing patients. So from a community perspective, I think this is a positive, because I believe that a lot of our local dentists will make the choice and accept the PPO recommend, or reimbursements. Not all, but some. And so for Janesville as a whole, and Beloit for that matter, and where all of our employees are at, my personal feelings are, we will increase Delta's PPO network.
I'd agree with that statement, with the caveat that Delta may not allow dentists in to be a PPO provider. Right?
There's going to be a limited number. I mean, they're not going to allow everybody to be in.
Yep.
But they'll allow a couple more.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Thompson, you go ahead.
Well, is there a reason why we suddenly have to vote on this tonight? I get uncomfortable as a board member, and maybe it's just me. I mean, this is a pretty big decision. I like the savings. But sometimes I like to think things, about things a little while, and chew on them, rather than suddenly this is here, and I've got to vote tonight on this. Can you respond to that?
I can. It's, thank you. It's certainly the board's prerogative always to wait to another meeting, or the, in this case, the committee. So we put action on there sometimes, so you have that ability, in case you do want to take action, but there's no problem with you waiting as well. So either way.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just like to mull over things for a while.
Sure.
The other piece, I'll add on to Dr. Schultz's comments. Our dental plan is piggybacked with our health plan, okay? So there's no taking the health plan and not the dental, or taking the dental and not the health, okay? It's together. So why I would, as the benefits chair, like a recommendation to the board, at least from our committee today, and whether the board decides to pass on it until the next board meeting, that's another discussion. But with the timeframe that we're at, creating enrollment materials for our employees, you know, doing things like that, I think Associated would appreciate the extra three weeks, because...
It's going to be three weeks then, right, between board meetings? Is that right?
I believe so.
Yeah, because...
This is the second Tuesday. Yeah.
So, you know, I just, from that standpoint, and, you know, if you look at this, and this is just my perspective, Commissioner Thompson, okay? Employees who are using a PPO dentist, there is zero effect. There's, there is no change. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
Okay. So we are allowing the employees to keep that exceptionally high level of benefits if they choose to go to a PPO dentist, and roughly one in three of our belly buttons that we cover, okay, based on claims, not necessarily based on participation, right?
Correct, that's accurate.
Because if we've got employees who just go in and get their teeth cleaned, and don't have a lot of claims, which hopefully is a lot of them, they don't, it's not very expensive for dental. So the numbers that we're using is based on claims. So, you know, I would say one in three is very safe. It might even be two out of five are already using a PPO dentist. Dr. Schultz?
Another point that I'm thinking about, I actually asked our consultants last week, I think it was, why are you bringing this up now? Because we were, you know, immersed in medical insurance, and of course, that's what they were working on for us. But the response was, you're looking for savings. And so when you see something that's very rich, certainly that would be our expectation, is that our consultants bring that to us. When we want to move on it, how we want to look at it, of course, is the board's decision. But I do appreciate that you remembered that we are looking for ways to save money.
Commissioner Solomon.
So the rates given, that's the total premium paid for dental. And of that amount, ninety percent district taxpayers pay, ten percent employee pays.
It's funding.
To clarify, that's the funding levels.
This is self-insured, too, Commissioner Solomon.
Okay, we changing self-insured to this? No.
No, under this, our recommendation is to stay with Delta, to stay self-funded.
The premium we charge ourselves, that's the total we charge ourselves. So we charge ourselves thirty-eight dollars, twenty-four cents a month for a single coverage.
Correct.
And the employee gets taken out of the paycheck, three dollars, eighty-two cents of that.
That is accurate.
And a family, we charge ourselves one-oh-three, so ten dollars a month is...
Paid for by the employee, the balance by the district.
It's a thousand dollars per family member.
Yes.
So me, that could be nine grand with the, with the, for the coverage there, for ten bucks a month.
If you have an employee with seven dependents, yes. Or eight dependents.
You're looking at them.
All right.
Well, I'm sorry, now one's moved away, so I won't quite...
Under twenty-six?
Uh, not, uh, just turned twenty-six, okay. All right, thank you. And so the, and the new premiums actually are a tad lower. Thirty, fifty-nine versus, in eighty-seven versus the one-oh-three and thirty-eight, so they're...
Fifteen percent lower, fifteen point five percent.
Oh, what we need to charge ourselves.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Murray.
So in that case, the premium share for dental for the employee will go down. What this, this one about that says participation?
We got mouse typed there.
What does that, what does that mean? Current? It just says current, and then the new option that says ninety percent, what is that?
The recommendation is you stay with what you have today.
Yeah.
Is no change in, in premium change.
Okay.
Funding levels. The plan's running at about a ninety percent loss ratio, so the plan is running well.
Okay. So what I'm concerned about is, when you use ratios, that seems like a high percentage of our employees will be affected by this. And then I, that, that's what I don't like to hear, without knowing that. I mean, and I'd be honest with you, I've been counting the ten all afternoon on lots of things. And I'm really tired of hearing, geez, you guys got the richest benefits. Geez, you guys got it all, you guys got it made, you know? And compared to who or what, you know, we, you know, can we just, I don't like that anymore. I'm really getting fed up with that. There's a reason we have benefits like that, to retain and attract employees over time. So if we want to stick to the facts, fine, but unless you're ready to compare with the ten other comparables in our district, geographically, size, with other like-minded corporations, with other private sector wages that they get, other kind of private sector benefits, do they get a new car, do they get, see? So I'm really getting excited about this. So I need to know more detail. If you're saying one in three employees won't be effective, affected, that's just too many people being affected. As much as I agree with Commissioner Thompson, the savings is remarkable, but at the effect of impacting sixty-six percent of our employees, and if you know as bad as I am, when I grew up as a kid going to Dr. Agard, my comfort level, especially when I go to the dentist, is very important. I don't care if I'm just getting my teeth cleaned, or x-rays, or what, because I don't know what's going to happen next. So this, I, I don't support this by the very fact that it impacts too many employees negatively. Thanks.
Let me just address something. You know, Commissioner Murray, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think the point of pointing, or, you know, the fact that they pointed out why we have such rich benefits is to brag, you know, and attract other employ, and, you know, future employees, and retain, and retain the current ones that we have. I am very proud of the benefits that this district offers. You know, as far as it affecting a lot of employees, what's happening on the private sector, okay, and I'm not involved with many school districts, okay, but I do a lot of dental insurance. And this is a very common, what we're proposing, plan design, on the private sector. What we're seeing is a lot of employees keeping their dentist for routine cleanings, because if you look, the routine cleanings are still covered at a hundred percent. If they're going to have any major work done, then they're making the decision of staying with their current dentist, or having that crown, that implant, that bridge done with a PPO dentist. And if they choose to stay with their current dentist, either their dentist may cut them a deal, based on if they're going to pay for it, or the employee is making the decision to pay a little bit more for the luxury of staying with their current dentist. I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I would rather look at this than cut out ortho.
You're not saying we're cutting out ortho, are you?
No, but over half the school districts in private sector don't have an ortho benefit. So I'm just looking at ways to find some revenue. We still have, even though this committee has done a great job with the consultants, of saving five million dollars on the health plan, we still have more to go. Dr. Schultz?
Did you address people that don't live in Janesville, that they live in another state, or...
Delta's a nationwide carrier, there's no...
Okay.
They have providers throughout the nation. Yeah, sure, that's...
Commissioner Murray.
Good question, though. I'm hoping Commissioner Thompson will join me in not passing this on to the board, so if it's two to two, it fails, just so you know. It seems like you're trying to engage me in a conversation of revenue and expenses for the district as a whole. And if that's the case, I can sit here and we, it's not on the agenda. What I think we should be doing to address those issues, and you know how I feel a lot of, about a lot of things, right? So why, when are we going to stop doing this at the expense of the employees? Let's talk about programming. Let's talk about charter schools. Let's talk about going to China, Abu Dhabi, Moscow, Finland. Let's, let's have some serious discussion then. You know, if you're going to be serious about this, Commissioner Stefano, let's have a serious discussion about everything else. You know, nobody wants to talk about that stuff, they just want to talk about impacting the employees here. This is wrong. This is just another dig at our employees. Thank you.
Well, as far as those other, that's not for the benefits committee.
No, I know that.
My intent on this is to look for ways that doesn't impact the employees very much, and to be more efficient with the money that, not only that the board is spending on these benefits, but the ten percent that the employees are paying for. And I'm mindful of that ten percent. And how do we get the biggest bang for those dollars? It's not balancing it on the backs of the employees. It's similar to why we eliminated coordinated care. That's five or six-hundred thousand dollars a year that nobody was using. It was just wasteful spending. So, you know, looking at this plan design, I think it's still exceptionally rich. And I think, you know, the employees, you know, will be very happy with, with this alternative. Commissioner Thompson.
Well, clarify comment Commissioner Murray made. I thought we've had two to two votes before, and it still goes to the board.
What does?
Yes.
Even if it's zero, four, you're still on the board.
Okay. Sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So whether I vote with you or without you, it still is going to go to the board, correct?
Absolutely.
It depends if somebody wants to put it on the agenda.
All right. So my final, then, comment to kick at the cat is, I do feel that we need to put everything on the table, whether I agree with or disagree a bunch of time, to say yes or no. So from that perspective, I have mixed emotions about this going to the board, but on the other hand, the board should be able to debate it one way or the other. But if it goes to the board, I'm not going to support it. I would rather delay it until the first meeting of the next month, because I frankly'd like to study it more. Plus, I'm concerned, feeding into Commissioner Murray a little bit, we're doing some piecemeal here. I mean, we're going to be voting on OPEC. We haven't decided on salaries, you know, so we're sort of piecemealing, in my opinion, with staff and benefits. And that makes me uncomfortable. So that's where I'm at. So it's going to go on the board. That's good clarification, thank you.
Commissioner Solomon.
Is there a list of, I don't know if it's Rock County or Janesville, of which dental offices are part and not part of this?
There is a list. You can go to delta-dental.com, or I can get your list.
Okay, all right.
DeltaDentalWI.com.
Yep. It is, the list is limited to two-hundred-and-fifty dentists within a fifty-mile radius, so if you do the search, say at fifty miles, it will stop at two-hundred-and-fifty providers. So if you do the list, it's limited to two-hundred-and-fifty dentists or fifty miles. You can do ten miles, five miles, and so forth.
Would you like some examples? I've done this a lot recently.
Be careful if you don't miss people, someone's so sure.
I guess for people to look, delta-dentalWI.com. Make sure you select PPO, or if you call your dentist, ask him if he's in the Delta PPO. Don't say, are you a Delta dentist because of premier is different?
Most, most dentists may not even know if they're a premier dentist or a PPO dentist.
I can send the list.
Okay. So worst-case scenario, if my, if my dentist isn't on the list, I can still have all the top part covered a hundred percent, which is the cleanings and all those things in the first category.
Correct.
Okay. Then if I need to do more major services, depending upon what it is, is covered eighty percent or fifty percent, depending upon the procedure?
Yeah, or the deductible.
Plus the deductible of fifty?
Correct, annually, per individual on the plan.
What's the one-fifty-four again, then?
Maximum per family.
Okay, so three deductibles per family, okay. And what is the logistic timings of this? So if we are changing, let's say we decide to change something by also July one, for the sake of our employees that know the changes, for them to be implemented and publicized and all that kind of stuff, what is the timeframe that decisions need to be made?
Your current effective date for dental is nine-one.
Right.
So you could make a decision to kick the can down the road, and make a decision and keep it at nine-one, right? It would be, it's our recommendation to move it to a July one effective date.
Okay.
Along with the medical. And the sooner the decision can be made to do it or not do it, the better.
Okay, I understand that. So sooner the better is good, but was there practical data, you know what?
The, you, you...
Is tonight imperative?
It's not imperative tonight.
April fourteenth would be.
Uh, I would say, I mean, we're planning on open enrollment for the employees the first two weeks in May. There has to be...
Fourteenth is probably a dropped date, I mean, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, if... Yeah, I mean, if that's your next meeting, yeah, I would say so.
Now it's still be with the current board, who's already heard this then, versus training new members. So I would think, I guess I'm okay with April 14th decision. Although I'm also okay to go forward now, too, so.
Is there a motion?
Is this possible action for tonight on the main agenda as well, or not?
It is.
Well, I guess I'll still move in that I would make a motion to take the recommendation with a small change. I would, the family premium would be 1449 versus 878 per month. And what that represents is a 20% of the increase of the family coverage versus single. So with that modification, so single would still be the 306, as quoted here, and family would be 1449.
So 10% on a single, 20% on...
Of the additional amount for the family.
We have numerous scenarios for both medical and dental on that contribution strategy.
For later on.
Correct.
So that might be a separate discussion later on?
At the board meeting, yeah.
Okay. Well, enough, I'll pass it on without recommendation of premium share. Just pass on the plan for now. So with, I will take back the exact dollar amounts for premium for now and discuss it at the board table.
So what is the motion, then?
To accept the recommended change in plans.
Thank you.
With premium share amounts to be determined.
No.
I will second it. So we have a motion by Commissioner Sotomayor to accept the recommendations from our consultants with option 1, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Okay. Saying that, we can, do we have the electronic stuff, Deb, or do you want us just to vote by hand?
If you want to use it, it's on.
Okay. The committee should vote. All right, that is 2 to 2, so that will be moved on to the board for tonight.
No surprises.
Well, it fails 2 to 2, but it will still be moved to the board. Good night. Future committee agenda items? Do we have any? Commissioner Murray?
I was going to wait till tonight, but policy... This is benefits, right?
Benefits.
Policy 4247 and attached administrative regulations, 42, 47.1 through 2 or 3, addresses early retirement benefits for administrators hired prior to March of 2006. I'd like to know, you know, I think we need to address that, let alone just as a policy, because there's language in here about indexing stipends to step-in lane positions of previous, you know, employee pay scales. So there's, without even talking about potential changes, there's language in here that doesn't pertain anymore.
Okay.
And if this is a policy or benefits thing, maybe it's better for the board to desire. But, you know, if we're talking benefit changes, and the question for tonight will be, any proposed changes to OPEB, whether it's 5 or 5.8, does that impact administrators hired before 2006? And if not, why not? Because the language here states, if your administrator hired before the year 2000, March 1, 2006, you enjoy healthcare till you reach the age of Medicare. So if our intent is to change other post-employment benefits, well, let's talk about all of them, including stipends that are received by administrators hired before March 1 of 2006. If you want to save some money, there's over half a million dollars in that piece. So I don't know if we want to address that in the benefits committee, or I can wait, bring it up in our OPEB discussion. But therefore, I'd like us to talk about those 2 benefits, administrators' benefits hired prior to March 1, 2006.
I will talk to President Ardray about that and see if the benefits committee is the place where he'd like that to start, or if that would be a PPC committee. I think there's kind of an overlap, and see if he has a preference one way or the other. Is that suitable?
Okay, thank you. Yes, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah, obviously, if it's a contracted thing that can't be changed, that's one thing. But if it can't be looked at at certain points, definitely we should take a look at all things, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Half million a year? Okay.
No, no, not a year.
Oh, okay.
All right. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything for future agenda items?
Thank you.
With that, this benefits meeting is adjourned.